We voted on changing the time in the day of our meeting. Because it's very hard for us to get anything done unless one of you guys are there. And Eli, I understand you're crazy with work. So we were thinking, maybe we should have our LOC meeting after your Board of Select meeting. Whether we start a little early or not, we then can at least explain the things on our agenda and the things that are still pending. So that's one of the things John was going to talk about. The other thing that John was going to talk about is, here's an example. We had a meeting back in October with Brian. Brian gave us some good advice. Brian's supposed to get back to us. Brian doesn't get back to us. We can't really do anything about that because it's up to Brian. So we need, we're the advisory board to you three select board people. And there's lots of stuff on our agenda that has been on that agenda for two, three months, and we're getting nowhere. So what's the solution?
Do you want to what?
I don't know if it's a solution or not, but one of the things we had already discussed...
Is this my surprise?
Well, this is your surprise. It's because of my schedule, and it's crazy, that I was going to step down from Lake Oversight Committee.
Who would you nominate?
I would nominate you.
All right, second it. And all in favor?
Aye. I think that's a good...
So I don't think that solves some of the problems, but...
Well, I think it will help, you know, because if something doesn't get back to them, then we're spinning our wheels. And it's frustrating for all of us. And it's frustrating especially for me because I'm on so many other boards. So that is a reasonable solution.
But I think having the meeting after our meeting might be a good idea as well because, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, Val and I like the idea because then we're doing meetings every Tuesday, but it's better than meeting on a Thursday, not getting to communicate with you all, even if it's 10 minutes, 15 minutes with us.
Yeah.
Would you want to do it earlier or later?
I don't think it's fair to do it earlier because part of our board, they all work, and they wouldn't even get here till 6:30.
So it might, yeah, because our meetings usually over by 6:30, quarter of seven, so that would make sense.
I mean, we could start, what time is we starting tonight, Val? About 7:00?
6:45.
6:45? We didn't realize the caucus was tonight, so it's going to be a quick meeting.
You can adjourn the meeting, go to the caucus, be there the 10 minutes it takes to do the caucus, and then reopen the meeting if you have things that you want to address that you don't have time to get to. That's always an option.
But you guys are going to be leaving right after this, correct?
Well, if you're across the street, yes.
Right. Well, we'll decide on that. So would we start this new schedule on, in two weeks? Which is what, the 20th, 20...
That works for me.
Bettina?
Since I'm the one that's going to have to attend.
Well, it's easy for you. You're just going to be here.
I know. So, I mean, it's a question of what works for you. It obviously works for me. So fit it into your schedule and let me know.
But would all of the board be there?
No.
On the two, your entire board at our LOC meeting for 10 or 15 minutes?
Well, I mean, I think...
When needed, how about that?
I think when needed. It's not too inconvenient. I don't think it solves the other problem you're concerned about, which is if you ask for information or whatever. We can't, we can't force a response from anyone that doesn't want to get back to us quickly. You know, if he could, if Brian, if Brian's trying to give us information or whatever and he gets sidetracked doing other stuff and doesn't get to it for a little while, it's not like we can force a response from him in a certain time period.
No, we can't, and you probably can't either, but sometimes coming from the Board of Selectmen, you know, gives somebody a kick in the butt. Because we're not going to accomplish...
You might overestimate it.
Our mission is to advise you guys what is needed around the lake.
Right.
And we have been doing that, and we've been doing a really good job of that. But if it's, if it's going to dead end, I don't particularly like dead ends, and I don't think the board does either because we're just spinning wheels.
Well, Chris, can you just start at the meeting in two weeks? I'll be there.
6:45.
6:45. There's no reason for the rest of the board to be there. It defeats the purpose of having a representative of the Selectmen. We don't need the whole Board of Selectmen there.
Okay. If it should come up that we need a vote from you three, the three of you...
We did the schedule at...
We could tell you in a couple of weeks in advance.
Yes.
So it could be posted.
Yes.
And that's, that's sort of...
Is that good? I think that's pretty good, Val.
And that's sort of what my role is as a Select Board representative, is to bring motions back.
Right.
What are the roles?
Exactly.
What are the responsibilities?
Okay, well, we'll discuss it at our quarter of seven meeting, but it looks good to me. When is your next meeting?
7:00.
Thank you. And I'm sorry to see you calling.
I'll still be around. You know, I drive you crazy, so.
No, I...
All right. Thank you, Chris. Jen?
Yes. Well, thank you for having me over this evening. My name is Jennifer O'Hop. I am here as a representative from the Opakam Land Trust, which I helped found over 20 years ago, pretty much the same amount of time I've lived in this town. I think we've all talked about a couple of years ago, the sickle parcel in town. And I am basically here today to just let you know what's going on publicly, let you know that we've been trying to move this project forward. And what I'm asking you today is if it's okay if I start working on grants to pursue purchase of that property on behalf of the town. Basically...
Go ahead.
Wait, question?
No, go ahead.
So I'm assuming everyone is aware where the sickle parcel is?
I have, sure.
So if you head down here behind the gas station, left-hand side, frontage, frontage on Blodgett Road.
There's the long road that goes, dirt road that goes into it?
I do have a map here.
Yeah.
It's approximately 173 acres. And what I would love to see happen is for the land trust to partner with the town and the senior housing folks so that we can have a spot for senior housing along the frontage. That would be this little parcel A here, the frontage on Stafford Road. And then for the rest to be open space recreational area for the town. And also, it has a significant portion of Stevens Brook, which runs into Hamilton Reservoir. It's the second largest influx of fresh water into that lake. So I think it's very important to conserve for the lake, for our community, for the environment, but also partnering with senior housing. So I'm just here to kind of let you know what I'm up to and say, our plan right now, if it comes to fruition, would be to apply for a grant from the state of Massachusetts called Local Acquisition for Natural Diversity for the open space portion of that. That is due in July, and that's something we're just sort of starting to put our ducks in a row on, but I thought it was necessary to come here and let everyone know what I'm up to.
I don't want it to be something that the town doesn't accept. The only problem that we have, the town could say later on, you could get the grant and the town could say, no, we don't want the property.
Correct.
So we need to probably somehow get something written on the warrant or for it.
Well, I know in the past, we had on the warrant to pursue investigating this parcel. The land grant would definitely have to go on the warrant, and our timeline has this going on next year's town meeting.
Okay.
But to...
The actual purchase of the land, you mean?
Yes. This would not happen until next year.
May I ask a question, please?
Yes, you may.
If you get the grant and we put it on the warrant and the town says no, then what happens?
Somebody else gets the money and they get to spend it.
You spend all that time, you're aware this is a possibility, and you're going to spend all that time working on it?
Story of my life.
Okay.
I'm doing this for the town. I think we have strong support from people who live on the lake because it is fresh water coming into the lake, from the seniors. And I think some of you have seen the preliminary results of the survey. This is, senior housing is very strongly supported, and this is pretty much a win-win for everyone.
It is for the town.
Access for hunting, access for fishing, senior housing.
And I would, I would say that, at least for me, I'm only going to state my opinion, that I'm in full support of it. We walked the property, I don't know, five months, six months ago, something like, I don't remember when it was. It seems like a while ago, but, and it's beautiful property, other than that tent village that, that is no longer there, I don't think. But it's, it's beautiful property, and absolutely, it's a win-win-win. It keeps some open space in area that, you know, we don't want to see what's happening in the serbage. With someone buying up property and suddenly there's 20 houses popping up in there where we used to have beautiful pristine property and now suddenly...
My grandfather's farm, great-grandfather's farm.
There you go. So, and then, you know, we've been discussing the idea of elderly housing for a number of years now. We had the project a while back that didn't work. This would be a perfect location for it, access to everything in the downtown village area, whatever you want to call it. I'd be 100%, 100% support of it, so.
Can you give me the name of the grant again?
It's called LAND, Local Acquisition for Natural Diversity.
Couldn't they make it shorter?
They're very creative with the state and their acronyms.
Really?
And call it alphabet soup, but I'm getting pretty good at it.
So with the understanding that the timeline is really based on next year's warrant, not this year's warrant, I'd like to make a motion to approve...
Them writing the grant.
Well, yeah, that was, I was trying to figure out.
Well, we'll start working on it. We have to go to a seminar on how to fill out the paperwork for land grants, but I've worked with a colleague who's done numerous applications for months and successfully. And I, I've been told by the person who runs the program, when am I going to see a project coming in from Holland? So that makes me feel very optimistic that we have a pretty good shot at this.
Awesome.
Well, then I make the motion.
I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
And you know I'm all for it. I mean, I've been at the meetings with you guys, so.
And it's just a matter of really working carefully with the town and the senior housing piece of that and just pushing it along.
I think we should know about that other grant that we applied for, for senior housing...
Oh, for the PVPC?
Yeah, I think that's the beginning of June.
Okay. And is there anything that I can do with my Opakam Land Trust hat on, a letter of support?
I think it's already been applied and gone in, so I think that's all. Just wait for the state to come back on that.
But if you need a letter of support from the Board of Selectmen to reinforce the, the potential for approval of this...
Technically, the land grant, the town applies for it, so that would be you.
Oh.
I'm just, I'm just offering to do the footwork and fill out the paperwork for you.
So then that's not the Opakam, wearing your Opakam hat and applying for the grant. That's you applying as the town.
On behalf of. So if that changes your vote anyway, I'm sorry. I'm sort of really familiar...
Well, I voted to approve it, so.
Okay. Well, you would see anything before I sent it in.
Yeah.
And if the grant wasn't approved or the town decided not to, this happens all the time, we just say, oh, well, we'll try again the next time, and another community would spend money on open space acquisition.
When did you say the PVPC we should know about?
In June.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work.
You just started.
Recapture funds for projects incomplete at the end of the contract.
Okay. So one of the local residents applied for a project for which he qualified. Unfortunately, due to the weather and the timing of the project, the, it wasn't completed prior to the grant running out.
Is this part of the PVPC grant?
Yes.
Okay.
So what Chris is asking, Chris Duffy has asked, is that we give them permission to recapture funds to apply to complete this, this already approved project that was not completed because of weather.
Okay. Because he had, all right, I have no problem with that. The only thing is, he had emailed me, and I thought he and I and Selectmen from Wales and Brimfield were getting together because it was part of that grant.
He did inquire as to whether or not it was going to be, Holland was going to make the judgment call because it's a Holland resident, or if it was still going to be a three-board, three-town issue because it's impossible to get the three towns together.
Well, except, we all, with the email he sent out, Paul from Brimfield said he would get together, and I said I would as well, so I don't know where that's at right now.
I have no idea. It was not included in those emails. I'm simply asking what he asked to be put on the agenda.
I have no problem losing the money just to finish the house that was supposed to be done.
It's just a weather and a timing issue, correct?
Yes, that was the only reason.
So it's a Holland resident, is it, the property's in Holland, obviously?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Do we know what the project actually is? Is it a septic issue or something like that?
It was a roof and I believe windows and painting in the house, which is...
The roof got done.
Which looks completely, the moss on the house is just destroying it. It shakes, its cedar shakes, so it's in enough shape, but it needs to be.
Obviously, they, they applied for it, it was accepted, they qualify for it.
They qualified for it.
This is just a bad timing type situation?
Yes, that's exactly right. It was just a bad timing situation.
I hate to see somebody punished for bad timing.
Correct. So would you like to entertain a motion to recap?
I'm all, we vote to approve the recapture of funds for the PVPC project.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So with this in place, Bettina, if you were to attend the meeting, you have the board's preapproval so that you could vote at that time?
Yep. Subordinate agreement, 47 Palmer Road, Brimfield?
Yes, we have a subordination agreement, which is in the office. We only need one signature on it, I believe. 47 Palmer Road is refinancing. There's more than enough equity in the property for us to subordinate a previous PVPC law when we were the lead town. We've done this before.
Oh, all right, this is the same...
This is the same, the same process.
The way I look at it is, we have a policy to approve the subordinations as long as there's enough equity in the project.
Yes, and there is. There's like $200,000 of equity in this project, so it's got a, it's a, so, okay, so you're going to approve the...
So make a motion.
Thank you.
Second it. Can you make the motion?
Did you make a motion?
I made a motion.
Or did you just suggest somebody make a motion?
I'm making a motion.
He's making a motion.
I'm making a motion.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All right. Now, there were a few things that came up that I, that came up today that I was not able to put on the agenda, one of which I would like to ask be on the agenda for next time. We were, Attorney Robert Nislik, who did the opinion for the purchasing of land by a municipality for the town, has been contacted by the Friends of the Hamilton Reservoir Association, and he has been asked to represent that group in potentially purchasing the lots formerly known as the self-boat land. He's concerned that there, there may have or may be a conflict of interest. There is no conflict of interest as the, because he represented the town...
I know, I understand that.
In, in, this is really more for the people at home, then now he'll be representing another entity within the town. He just wanted a letter acknowledging that this is not a conflict of interest because he, it's completely different interests than, different work. So he would need that on a, on a official letterhead for, which I can put on the agenda for next.
Okay.
Okay, I think that's great.
And then, we have the lighting project for, I'm sorry, I thought we were done with the agenda for some reason, and I'm just jumping here.
Sorry.
We have a lighting project for the school where the school's lights were upgraded in 2004. At that time, they should have been brought up to code from 1996 when the code was changed. They weren't. Our new electricians have now opened the ceilings in the classrooms, which is required, they are required by law to bring the lights up to code. There was no way for them to have anticipated this or seen that it wasn't done properly. It's an additional $5,000 cost to the town for upgrading the school and bringing it up to code. When you consider that we have close to $200,000 in grant money and incentive money, a $5,000 investment on a part of the town is really very small because it's 50% on our...
Our electric.
Although we anticipated it being a net zero expense to the town, there's no way for us to know that. This was told to me today. The grant expires on August, on April 30th, so the work has to be done prior. So we need to look into getting the funding for this. We have money in a Thames River account that we could allocate through a vote of the Select Board to cover the difference in cost. The electric, the electrical overseer of the project is going to try and work with the Green Communities Grant to see if he can tweak the difference out because this was completely unforeseeable without busting open the ceiling for the original audit in the first place. So it would be, if we could get a motion to allow the money to be used, if the Green Community Grant doesn't come through, that will give us the option of making sure that it's all done on time so we don't lose the incentives. We will lose $40,000 in incentives if the project isn't completed on time.
If we post it to the next agenda, will it slow down the project at this point?
Yes.
It will.
It will.
So would you consider this to be, I'm concerned about it not being on the agenda at this point, is what my concern is.
Yes, I understand that, yeah.
And do you consider this to be an emergency that, given the fact that we have the opportunities to circumvent the posting requirements in an emergency situation, do you consider that an emergency situation?
I would be more comfortable if you, yeah?
Can I, can I offer a solution here?
Sure.
Can we table this with the understanding that I'm going to look and explore another option within the next couple of days, and then if we have to have an emergency meeting to settle it, we'll have an emergency meeting to settle it?
That was actually going to be my suggestion. Because I wanted you to be aware of it because of the timing of it, but it's not on the agenda, so doing a motion to actually acquire the funds at this point, we could do that in 48 hours.
Right.
That's something that we could put off.
When do you think you'll know?
I will reach out tomorrow, and I may have an answer by Thursday.
So if we had to have an emergency meeting for this, like Saturday morning for five minutes or something, we could.
All right. So I will, would you like to post a meeting, and then if, if it doesn't pan out, we can cancel the meeting?
Yeah, I'd get it posted.
Yes. Post it, and if it doesn't pan out, we can cancel.
Is Saturday work for all three of you?
I can do any night, except for Thursday because we have that public hearing here.
What time are we saying?
Whatever time you want. It's all day, Saturday is pretty...
Good between like 9:30 and 9:37. Is that...
Is that good for you guys?
Yeah.
I'll be in the Berchtesgaden, so whatever you want to do.
I'm just being sarcastic, just pick, pick a time. I prefer to do, get it done in the morning if you guys are okay with that.
Yeah, it's a 10, it's a five-minute discussion, it's no big deal.
That.
Okay. All right. And I'm sorry I interrupted. I thought that we were done for some reason. I completely skipped over snow days and the fire chiefs' vehicle.
Warrant signed in the town meeting and, yeah, everything else. All right, snow days. So it's been brought to my attention, and I think a couple other people's attention, that the town hall is closed on snow days. And people are wanting to know, how come?
Here's a letter from the highway department?
Yeah, I read, I read that.
Yeah, and I talked to Brian today too, so let me just summarize my discussion. And I also called, reached out to a few other towns, you know, towns of similar size to find out what their policy was. Brian's concern is that on a snow day, the highway department needs to focus on the public roads before they come back and do the school parking lot and do the town hall parking lot. I mean, he, his, in the community center and all those other public locations. And, you know, there's a public safety concern. If we have town hall open, the highway department hasn't plowed our parking lot or the community center. So I think it's more of a public safety issue than the fact that, and this is the feedback that I've gotten too before, Bettina, is that why, why does the town hall employees get to close down when we don't have to close down in the public sector? Because it's, it's a public safety issue. The other thing is, I reached out to Wales, I reached out to Brimfield, I reached out to West Brimfield. They have the same policy. So, so just to initiate a discussion, I'd like to make a motion that we maintain the, having the town hall closed when the school is closed on a snow day.
Second.
I'll second that. I kind of went back and forth a little bit on this myself and talked to some people from other towns, as a UPS guy used to deliver to. And it is relatively, like you said, towns of this size, that's fairly common, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fire chiefs' vehicles, I'm just bringing up again because we had discussed it, and then you did some research for us.
Yes, I, I reached out through my STAM list, which is 98, 103 towns, small town administrators, towns of like size. Of those, I got 60 or so responses. Two of them have black vehicles. All of them are 100% identified as fire vehicles.
By license plate or by stickers?
No, by stickers, by lights, they're, you clearly know that it is a fire chief's vehicle. It is a fire vehicle. It's not just a license plate.
Because right now, ours looks like an unmarked cruiser.
And I was actually behind one today in Truesbury. It was all black, not one marking on it, just said "fire." It was a state plate, so I don't know if that makes a difference, but it was just a blue, mass state plate that said "fire."
It was probably our chief.
That I can't possibly tell you.
But I actually have the list of, of the, and there are white vehicles. Most of them are red. Two of them are black, but they are clearly identified as fire vehicles. The other ones are red, so they don't, where there isn't, where there isn't the big logo of the town on it, the vehicle's red, so you know it's a fire vehicle.
Where are we going with this, to require the chief to, to mark the vehicle?
I did the research because he said at the meeting that he was here...
And he didn't, no other towns do it?
No other town marks their fire chief's vehicle since 9/11, and they're all black. And he said go ahead and check, so I did.
So I wanted that brought up. I have a problem with it not being marked, so.
Well, the only problem I have with it is it's not in the budget at this point. The budget was to, to not have it marked, is, that's as it was explained to us in the last meeting, correct?
He also said it would cost about $3,000, and I, I understand he could get magnets for the sides of the vehicle that would cost about 50, and then cover the entire door. So there's, there's some definite inconsistencies in the information that I've gotten as far as they're not all black. They are all marked, they're not, it's not that expensive. It can be that expensive. It depends on, on what's done as far as detailing.
Anything could cost more.
Hmm?
Anything could cost more.
Anything could cost more, yes. And everything costs more than nothing.
True. So that was just my...
All right. Let's hear it to us.
I, I honestly have no opinion in one way or the other on this actual topic. I hate to be the one to say that, but...
It's all right.
To me, it's, I think it's more of a concern over complaints from people that see him out and about and go, how come?
There's a bit of credibility issue when he tells us, tells the board that information and presents it as fact.
And it's not.
That's what it is.
We had a, a small gathering for Chief Foster, and there was not a black vehicle in there, and there were fire chiefs from all over the state who came.
I wasn't there.
No, I'm, okay. All right. Warrant signed. Payroll, $27,991.84. Accounts payable, $51,289.05. The annual town meeting is May fifteenth at 7:00 PM. The caucus tonight, caucus is tonight at 7:00 PM, both are at the elementary school. The following are seeking, boards are seeking members, the zoning board of appeals, OPEB, two members, bylaw committee, one member, capital planning committee, one member, not affiliated with any other boards, committee, cable committee, two members, planning board, one, but I mean, that'll be taken care of tonight.
Lieutenant Swain asked me to talk about the drug takeback.
Okay.
He, they have a date for a drug takeback for the residents. It's going to be here at the town hall on the police side on April twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, but it's going to be here. It was at the community center in the past, but it's going to be here.
Hey, just remind me.
Yes, sir.
That's what I have on Saturday. Let me double-check the timing on something that's going on Saturday, and then I'll get back to you on the timing for me.
Okay.
Public access?
I'm still Chris McCoo, Lakewood Drive. If you're having, if you're having this special meeting for that other subject, is it possible to decide on the attorney thing with Attorney Nislin before two weeks?
There's forty-eight hours' notice if you would like to put that on the agenda, that's something you could do, but I don't know-
I don't think, I don't think it's a big deal, I'm not, I-
Yeah, I have no problem with that, that's going to take-
It's perfectly legal to do that, so there's no reason why.
That's fine, it's going to take two minutes too.
Yes, but-
Yes, but what?
We're only having the special meeting if we're dealing with the money thing.
That's fine.
So if we have the special meeting, we'll do both.
Whenever you have, if you have a special meeting before the next POS, it would be highly appreciated because of lots of reasons.
Yes. Anything else, public access?
Lighting at the firehouse is great, they did a great job. Nice break down there, so we can see.
Yep.
Ann Hall, and I would like to invite everybody to be part of Cleanup Day. It's really developing into a big thing.
They saw the signs.
It's going to be on the twenty-first, meet at Holland Elementary, it's from nine to noon, and then there's going to be a big party, there's a couple of prizes that have been rallied up. The party's going to be over at the community center. And this year, we have, the last Green Valley has given us an ice grant, and Opakam Land Trust has backed them, along with support from a lot of work on Chief Brian Hoy. And the fire department and the highway department. So anyways, we were working away again today at that, and it's really coming into a big thing this year. There's going to be additional roads, not just the five main roads this year.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Anybody else?
Kind of on the same note, I don't know if baseball wants me to announce this or not, but this field cleanup is this Saturday as well, for anyone that wants to help clean up the fields for the baseball and softball. That is also this Saturday.
So you'd be here anyways for the meeting?
Just come right after two minutes, we can have it outside.
Me, me, second base.
What time is the cleanup at?
I don't know when it starts, it's early.
And it goes all day until it's done?
There's multiple shifts.
Okay.
Is that the, the bracket?
Yeah, it's the, the, yeah, little league softball, baseball.
Right.
Yes, I noticed they moved the, my voice came out, they moved the nets, soccer nets last week, actually. All right. Make a motion to adjourn?
Second?
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Six thirty-three, my dear?
Hey, Larry, are you going to hang mine for the five-quick?
Might as well.